All right, Ken, can we start at this point?
Yes.
Okay, all right, this is Judd Harsher, Acting Chair this evening for Zoning Board of Appeals for the Village of Irvington, June 22, 2021. This is my first time as Acting Chair, so if I don't get it right, I apologize in advance. I'll do my best just as far as the language and protocol for the record. But for the first thing, I believe I have to open the meeting, is that correct? So, opening the meeting.
Well, Judd, I think we should approve the minutes from the last.
Oh, that, correct, correct, yes. So, so everyone has had a chance to review the minutes from from May, and I think that there were some notes put on those, and does everybody at this point approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Motion, a motion to approve the minutes. Charlie, thank you.
I second that.
Second the motion, Ken? All those in favor?
I.
I.
Okay, the minutes are approved. So at this point, I would like to open the meeting for June 22. Now, do I have to get an approval to open it, or can we just open it?
I think we can just go to the first person on the agenda.
The meeting is open, and the first person on the agenda this evening.
We should probably just make a note for the record that we have four members here today. Typically, they would be five, so that, I guess applicants should just understand that they need a vote of three in favor in order to be approved, and they can postpone, I guess, until the next meeting if they feel like they're might be put in jeopardy if they only have four members.
Have they all been notified that they're only four members? Or should we do that in advance of each one?
Well, there's no penalty in informing them when they're in the meeting that they need three of the four votes.
Do we have to tell them that in advance, Charlie?
I don't think we have to, but there's no harm in telling.
Okay, I understand, okay.
We did, I think, notify one applicant a few days ago, because I would have also had to recuse myself from that matter. A little more unusual.
Right.
Okay, so Sarah, are we going to bring on the first applicant?
I was actually just gonna say, the 1 for 34 South Ferris is not here right now.
Okay.
Next applicant, here.
Okay, 19 Matheson?
Yes.
Okay.
There we go, there we go, there we go, hi, hi, everybody.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening, Rad Opichich, the architect for 19 Madison.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody.
Evening, Rad. Brad, there's one thing I wanted to just disclose is that this evening, there are four members of the zoning board on the call.
Yes.
And for the approval, we would require three. So we wanted to just disclose that to you in advance, that we would need three out of four.
Okay. I'm hoping for all four.
Okay.
That's what I'm hoping. I'm gonna work hard for all four, okay?
Half-full kind of group.
All right, yes, I understand. I heard the opening. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
So we are proposing quite an extensive project at 19 Madison, which is a renovation of the existing building. Matt, could you just open up the site?
One sec. And we're gonna go to... Can everyone see?
Nope, nope, it did not open for me, no.
The PDF is not open.
It might be open, but it's not visible to us.
Okay, one sec. Oh, there we go. Share, how about now?
Yes.
Oh, there we are. Now we're cooking.
Can you just pull it up a little bit, Matt? There we go. All right, so we are proposing a renovation of the existing building, and which is, if you can circle that, Matt, there we go.
So here's.
And then addition, that's the existing building. And then the addition that we're proposing is a two, a new garage, two car garage, a mudroom, and a connector, what we call a glass sliver, and then a family room off the new kitchen. And then the new garden, which features a new pool, a lounge area of the pool that's paved, a round pool for coverage purposes, which we're seeking a variance for, is all grass, just to minimize the coverage. There's a new spa. And then outside the kitchen is a new dining, outdoor dining patio. And then we have various little walkways that get you from point A to point B. In order to accommodate, you know, a comfortable house for four little guys and mom and dad, we really worked hard to minimize the coverage, because this property was over the allowed to begin with, which we'll go over in a few minutes. So we are seeking two variances. One is for the coverage over the allowed. We currently 9.68% over the allowed. The proposed work would bring us over 29.3% over the allowed. So that's, and what we did do, we kind of started with the existing terraces around the house, especially the side terrace and the rear terrace. We were considering taking those out to, you know, to help with the coverage numbers. But when we looked at it in detail, what you see in the green lines that circle the trees, those are the root structure, as per the code. And we realized that touching those terraces, that we would be compromising those trees, and we kind of backed away from that. And then we went back and really cut back on the paving as much as practical. So we are seeking the coverage variance. The other variance that we are seeking is we have a very strong axis of the pool, which are two entrances to the pool, north-south. There's one gate on the south side of the property, the other side, Matt?
My other south?
Which is on the axis with a trellis gate on the north side. And that one, if you can blow that up, Matt, please?
Yeah, let me, yep.
Go to the larger plan?
Yeah, let me go to the larger plan, one sec. Can everybody see the larger plan?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so let me just blow up.
The gate over to the north side, right there, as a pool gate is not an issue, but we do have a trellis over the gate, which is very pretty. And that is straddling the building, because it's over six feet high, and we are straddling the building setback line. That is not in compliance. So we are over by two feet, ten and five eighths of an inch. And if you can go through the detail, Matt, we'll show the structure in question.
Everybody see this one?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
The detailed one, the one that is circling. So the fence itself is in compliance, but the little trellis above that, which is very pretty, is considered over six feet, and therefore is a requires a variance. Now, if we can go to the
Coverage analysis?
Average Analysis map, and if you can take us through that.
Yep.
We can see how our property compares to the neighboring properties in the IF-40 zone.
Right, so as part of our approval process with the planning board, one of the things that we were required to do was put together comparison with other neighboring properties around ours to assess how what we're asking for compares to the other properties within that zone. So what we did was took an evaluation of all the properties that are within the IF-40 zone, which is where our property exists, and based on the information that we could find on the property cards on the Town of Greenberg website, we're able to compile a schedule, and I'll just blow it up here, of what the property areas are, what the allowable's are, and at least based on the information that was on the website for what they accounted for for building and any paving that was noted, which may exclude some areas. What we were able to determine is that, based on the overall property size and overall coverage numbers, what we're asking for in terms of what's proposed is very much in line with what the characteristics of the other of the other properties in the neighborhood are. So at the top here, you see the first two lines are the 19 Matheson Park subject property. The first indicates what the current values are, and then the second line would give you what the proposed values are in terms of total lot coverage, not the, what we are over allowable, Rad already spoke to. But you can see going down the line with comparison to other properties that are 12, 11, 10, 8. Where not, what we're proposing is not inconsistent with the characteristics of the rest of the neighborhood based on that assessment.
Do you have an analysis of how they compare to those properties in terms of FAR? Like, you're going to 29% over. What are these other properties like?
Well, they're compared to what's hello, brain function, in comparison to what's allowed, you mean?
Correct, right, so you're asking us to approve a variance that gets you to 29.6% over allowable coverage. What are these other properties like in terms of their allow?
Hold on just one moment, because I do have that information. Okay. I just have it written up, so I can read it off in terms of by address, right? If that's okay?
Yep.
Okay, so property B, which is 13 Matheson Park, is under coverage. So right now, they're 91.4% of what's allowable. So they're under subject property C, which is 15 Matheson Park, is over by 6.8% on what's allowable.
Blow back the picture.
Yep, go ahead, sorry.
I was just saying, while you're reading it, it would be helpful to see the diagram above.
Oh, yes, sure, and actually, yeah, I can do that. And actually, I realized that I misspoke on property B. So, property B, which is, actually, it's a non-conforming lot, right? So their current total lot coverage is 22.97% excuse me, 22.97% of the total lot. But based on what they're allowable is, they're actually 91.4% over.
So the one that you said is 90 was under, is 91?
Yeah, I was misreading the number that I had there.
Okay.
My mistake. So then going down now to C, which is this guy here, right? So that one is 6.8% over the allowable. Property D, right here, that is under by 0.66%. Property E, the E, here you are, E, is under by 6.23%. Again, these are based on what we were able to get off of the property cards and may not include all the paving. And so then property F, where are you, F, right there, is under by 26%. Property G, right there, is under by 12%. Property H is over by 28%. Property I is under by 15%. Property J, J, where are you, J? J, right there, is under by, just under 4%. And property K, right, and this one's an anomaly in that it's two parcels make up the property, so that one's under.
It's no longer there, actually.
And the building is no longer there, right? But that, based on the criteria that was listed on the property card, is under by 30% in comparison to what's allowed.
Okay.
So, other than property H, property H is the only one that's over by what they're like 28%, and you're 29, so of all the comps, this would be the most over, is that correct?
Well, B.
No, B is the most over, because it's a non-conforming lot size.
Okay.
Right, so do we know if B was granted a variance, or was it just existing non-conforming when the zoning was drawn up?
We don't know that for certain, but I think it was existing non-conforming, because if I remember correctly, the zoning district breakup changed some years back.
Right.
Probably, and post when this property and the building, the house existed.
Right.
Notices were sent to all the required neighbors, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and we're not, are we aware of any objections, Sarah or anyone?
I assume not. In the past couple of days, so.
Are there any neighbors here, Sarah, that we know?
Uh, no.
Okay, nobody has their hand up?
There are no attendees right now.
Okay.
If I may just interject, when we were going through the process with the planning board, and we probably did four or five meetings in the process of getting the approval, there was at no point in the process where any neighbors came forward with any objections to what was being proposed at any point, and we worked very diligently to kind of mitigate the impact on the site as much as possible. And, I mean, what you can see from the aerial is that, while the number reads significant in terms of what we're asking for overage, in terms of the impact on the site, it really is minimized, I think.
And what's pictured here is the proposed site, right? Because the pool is being moved from a corner to where it is.
Yeah, this is the new site plan, yep.
Let me, I can probably zoom in a little bit. Right, so you can see this is the proposed driveway, which obviously doesn't count. The pool currently sits like, sort of about here, if I remember correctly. And so then this is the pool spa. This is the lounge area that we were speaking of. There's a little bit of a paving space in front of the family cabana, and then the dining in front of the kitchen.
And then the existing terrace, isn't that, let's show that the existing terrace is, which is the existing terrace is a substantial. There's a front terrace and the side.
Right, so you can't see them fully here, because obviously, the aerial view with the trees obscures some of that. But there's the predominant terrace, which is here, and then wraps around the side. And then also the terrace here. I'll go back to the plan, just for clarity.
And then, actually, right?
Yep. Right.
And also, what's important to note is that, you know, we're surrounded by these mature trees that are in delicate state. So we tried to
Right, yeah, we were really threatening to needle in terms of where we could do things and being selective about where things were done, so that we weren't jeopardizing any of this very mature growth here, and then also protecting this grove of trees that exists over here. So, and of course, respecting the original building.
So, Rad, I have to be honest with you. When I see all of these other lots that are under coverage, and you're going from, you're tripling the overage, I'm gonna have a hard time supporting that, because how do I ever go, how do I ever say to these other properties that you can't also go 30% over? And they're under, right, so they would be, you know, coming to us for massive expansions, and their and their point of reference would be, well, you know, for 19, you let them get to 30% over.
Well, the difficulty, the struggle from day one is that, you know, there are these quite elaborate terraces around the building that you know, they're beautiful, but there's not a lot of use for them. And the clients were willing to remove, but the impact on the trees, we, you know, we pulled it back, and that's a and that, do you ever figure on those terraces what the square footage is on the side and the rear terrace? Like 800 square feet, so that's
Yeah, it's at least that much.
That would have made our numbers look really much better. But the impact is more than the gain. I mean, you know, because it's, we would lose all those trans.
But not from my perspective. Like, my perspective is that every single one of these would rightfully come before us and say, well, 19 Matheson is 30% over, why can't we be 30% over? And they're under, so you're talking about, you know, big expansions that they would feel that they're entitled to.
Well, that's also, your point's well taken, but it's also kind of a function of what the the size of the property is, obviously. 30, 30, 29% overage on a site that's almost 80,000 square feet in property area is significantly different than 30% overage on a property that's 24,000 square feet.
Yeah, I'm pretty good at math, I understand.
No, yes, obviously.
But again, and, you know, if we were talking about going from 10 to 12%, you know, that's an easier precedent for me to get in on board with than tripling it. Right, going from 9.68% to over 29%. I mean, that's, you know, that's a substantial uplift, substantial.
But we're also already starting out, we're starting out with a 9% overage.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
But, you know, those were the cards that were dealt when, you know, the owner bought the house. They presumably knew that.
What the?
That they were over on the FAR ratio.
Well, they did. Not, they loved the property.
They love, I totally get it, but like, you know, this is a big a big expansion on the overage, and it sets a bad precedent, precedent as far as I'm concerned. I don't know what my other board members think.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Sure.
What is the, in terms of what's being added to square footage, how much of that is the pool and sort of areas around the pool, and how much of it is, are the additions to the home itself? Is there something that shows a breakdown?
Yeah, I believe on the coverage worksheet. Right, so in terms of, so it's kind of split between what's being added to the building, which you see here, and then you know, the rest of it's balanced in what's being added in paving that connects the different garden areas. So in terms of the pool, in terms of the pool itself, we've actually reduced that size, even accounting for the spa. But when factoring in some of the other paving, because of having to make the compromise with the planning board to maintain the existing terraces in order to protect that mature tree growth on that side of the property, you know, that we weren't able to take advantage of offsetting in that way.
The pool is smaller, the paving around the pool is do we have that figure of what the paving around the pool was before that and what it is now? Do we have that figure?
Not handy, no.
The two car garage is a minimum dimension. And so, I mean, the spaces are not extravagant. They are kind of a minimum for a family of six. You know, the patio at the pool is perhaps something that we could pull back on, which is 126 square feet.
I mean, that's what I was wondering. I appreciate that the owners and you were looking to make some trades, and that it really just was not advisable to remove the existing patios. But I'm wondering if there's any, if there's any place else where we could, where there's the possibility of removing some pavement. And I don't know what other options there might be for the pool patio, but to at least try to minimize the
We could go to lawn on the pool patio, which is not as practical, obviously. Because, you know, any area on the furniture gets eaten up pretty quickly. We can reduce a little bit on the paving in front of the cabana, which is not a significant amount. You know, we started with gravel to mitigate coverage, but of course, that's coverage. So that didn't work for us. And perhaps look at removing the rear terrace, but I just worry about those trees. Which, you know, the planning board was very concerned about, and appreciated that. You know, we didn't get close to those trees, so, you know, everybody it's a balance. And I thought we reached it, but maybe we haven't.
Rad, the patio that's in, in front of the, between the steps coming down off of the home and the pool, that patio there, that there's like a plus 98 there, or?
Here.
Do you know approximately the square footage of that area?
We can figure that out in a second.
To bring it down? It seems like there, I mean, there are other patios off the home, right, that?
Well, that one is directly next to the pool, so.
True, I mean, I've seen other
435 square feet. Four, four hundred and thirty five square feet.
Grass around them and the and lawn chairs on the grass or.
Right. Uh, that that one is uh, nine, um, four hundred and thirty five square feet.
Okay.
And then there, just if I'm reading the diagram, and then there are patios on either side of that, right?
There's a little patio here, yes, that's outside of the um, family room cabana. And then there's a dining patio here outside of the uh, breakfast room kitchen.
Well, outside the cabana is not really a patio, it's it's a, it's a, you know, it's a walkway, it's uh, I mean, yes, we could. It's um. You know, it's eight feet wide, we could maybe make it a little narrower, um. Couple of feet. Um. And then we have two little patios up above and that show that.
Right, so there's.
One is, the one on the right is a fire pit. And the one on the left is a, is a dining table, so, you know, we can, we can scale back on that, um. Uh, you know, the total. Nine by nine. So we have the those two in the back are nine by nine each.
Yeah, I, I mean, I I would, I would feel more comfortable with, you know, something that's as far as a percent over. That's that's not as near to thirty percent over, just because as Charlie said, the precedence that this would set.
Okay. I mean, the the pool is as small as it should be, uh, I mean, actually, it's not twenty feet wide, it's eighteen feet wide. The spa is, um, we can go back to the clients, see if. If they're willing to uh, reconsider not having a spa, because that's covered as well, but I think they would really appreciate that, so. Um. Uh, the the not, also the equipment, the air conditioning units, right, there.
Yep.
That's coverage as well.
Right.
Oh. Uh, that's thirteen by nine. Another hundred and twenty, so we, at one point, we had, we had the mechanical equipment up on the roof of the garage and. That is a uh, a more difficult thing to accomplish with noise and vibration, so. We decided to go with a more traditional approach, we're putting them. On the ground, uh, but that is hundred and twenty square feet of coverage. So, you you know, um. So you would like this number to come down at some, so somewhat?
I very much would like that.
Would you care to give us a suggestion?
A range, plus or minus.
A range. I would, I would get, I would be. You know, I'm just one guy, but I'm gonna have a hard time in, you know, anything that doubles the overage, right? So if you go above twenty percent, it's gonna be very hard for me to get behind that. You know, if you come back next month, you're gonna have different constituency here, right? Maybe they're not gonna be as uh, excited or unexcited about any particular aspect, but you know, in the here and now, right now. You know, I'm, I'm not in favor of this plan, and I'd like you to come back with a plan that reduces the square footage. You know, gets it under twenty percent. But that's just me, you can ask the other members what they would like to.
That is gonna be difficult, but I mean, uh.
We polled the audience.
Telling you what I would like.
Right, yeah, no, I.
I hear you, I appreciate that.
Well, the steps coming off the house at four hundred and thirty five square feet. You know, I mean, that, it seems like there's a lot of, a lot of stone, a lot of patio here. From from what I see on the o- 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 on the visual, um. I mean, if that were, i- is that a flat area there, could that just be flat lawn?
Yeah.
Right in here?
Yeah, we have, we we have lawn all around the pool, uh. You know, we're just with four kids uh, running around pulling chairs, you know, uh, 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 patio is is much more practical than than lawn. So.
I I personally recognize that, you know, this neighborhood is kind of a unique neighborhood, there are large. Plots of land, I don't know, uh, you know, I I'm. Feel like I would generally be more flexible here, uh, I don't know that I have a particular number in mind, but. Um. I agree that if there was, you know, some reduction in just terms of the. The stone or the hard surface area, I, you know, at that point, I'd probably be inclined to. To approve it, but I would, I would also like to see some some reduction, I think.
Uh, yeah, um, because wh- when we look at the 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 uh, the. Analysis map, not again, right, it doesn't, it doesn't feel. Like we went paving crazy, right, it doesn't feel. I mean, I know the numbers, I understand the numbers, gentlemen, and 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 everybody. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, I get the numbers, but when you look at the the graphics of this, we look like. We belong here. With what we're proposing. Uh, yeah, we we will go back and and see where we can nip and tuck and uh. Um, you know, the house, uh, we. We trimmed, we trimmed and trimmed and anything less than what we're proposing for the addition, the client is. Not going to be happy with the spaces, so, um, yeah, I think we'll, we'll go back and look at. Uh, some of those areas in front of the pool, perhaps uh. Uh, in front of the cabana, maybe those two areas, which is the fire pit and the other adjacent space. Perhaps they'll get eliminated and. Uh, we come back with uh. A number that everybody will be comfortable with.
Okay, I think that's a great idea, I look forward to seeing the new plans.
Excellent, thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
We're gonna um, continue this for July, Red?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we need, do we need a motion to adjourn or to adjourn this matter or?
We're gonna, a motion to adjourn until July, do I have a second?
No, is that, is that what we normally do, or do we just ask, they just withdraw for today and you come back next month? I mean, Ken, you would know better than me, I forget how, I forget how they do this.
It's all on you, Ken.
I don't remember, but I don't think we need to withdraw it, I think we can just, uh.
Or or we can just approve, we can.
Star Paul.
Right.
Judd.
I think we can just continue it until.
Right, until we and then.
I mean, until July, and I'm just curious.
To be, to be continued until next month in July?
Yep, sounds good.
All right, terrific.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Red, thank you, too.
Thank you.
Judd, just so you know, um, the applicant for thirty four South Ferris Street is here.
Okay.
Okay, great.
So. Right. Hello, Peter, can you hear us? Peter's on, yeah.
He's muted, so even if he can hear us, he can't tell us that.
Uh, there we go.
There we go.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, Peter.
Can you, we cannot see you, Peter.
I I'm, I don't know why, but let me try to fix this.
Okay.
Uh, okay, I see what it was, sorry about that.
Right. Uh, so so Peter, just uh, to disclose to you that we have uh, four members of the zoning board here this evening.
Very good.
To to get your uh, variance approval, we would need three, a minimum of three out of four, okay?
Cool.
Just wanted to disclose that with you, uh, should you decide, you know, to to postpone. Until uh, when the, when there's a a full board here.
I I, hopefully, since all my neighbors have no problem with it, hopefully, the board members won't have any problem with it.
Okay. All right, and the neighbors have, I I believe I saw the neighbors were notified.
They were notified, I, before we ever sent anything out, I spoke to people personally. People behind and to the side, either side, and across the street, so that Matt Spencer across the street. Uh, Brian, his wife next door, and uh, who's behind us, and Van Hastings who are next to us.
Right, you had notified them by mail and gotten receipts, yes?
Um, it was sent out by the company that Yost and Campbell had sent it out, so.
Peter, I I usually just certified mail receipts on what was presented and filed.
Yeah, they're at the end of the document.
Yes.
Okay, okay, yep.
Terrific.
Great, so we can move.
Okay.
Listen, tell us about what you're doing, Peter.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're planning on putting in uh, air conditioning, central air conditioning. Uh, there's a new type of system that basically can fit between. The Joyce in ceiling, so it's not obtrusive. And supposedly, the system that they use is very quiet. And unobtrusive. Um, we would have it near the back side of the house, basically across from where our neighbors have their huge. Compressors, and we didn't complain about that at all when the time was, and these people aren't complaining either. Um. That's what it is, it's just uh, the compressor in the back and we plan based upon. Uh, what we were told by Yost and Campbell, they said if you. Attach it to the, to the building, may get vibration, even though there aren't many people to get that sort of vibration, they recommended. Uh, putting, so four inch concrete base, and then they put it on that, and. So that's what we're planning on doing, and I think it's three feet by four feet concrete base. Um, but.
Right, and the variance is the setback on the side yard, right?
About ten feet to the property line, and so it's. You know, it would, we would go there, but it's, as I said, they have compressors on the other side. We do have arborvitae in between us, and uh, nobody has a problem with it.
And and this is the only place it can go, it can't go in the back, it can't go on the driveway side?
No, definitely can't go on the, in the driveway side.
Okay.
Back would still require variance.
Oh, it would?
Yeah.
Right, because it's, it's not fifty feet from, right, okay.
Yeah.
Right.
It, so it would just be around the corner and it's still within the, the.
Setback.
Days.
Okay.
Um.
All right, I mean, it's, seems pretty straightforward to me, I don't know how you guys feel about it.
Yeah, I mean, I I'm I'm looking at the diagram, uh, with the ten, you know, the ten uh, feet, seven inches. And and ten foot six at the back. And then the the condenser is drawn and you're saying that it's about, about three, three, three feet, so it'll be be. About seven feet from the property line.
Uh, about that, but I think it's actually the condenser itself, as I believe, less than three feet.
Less than.
The the uh, footprint that it would go on is three by four. Four feet in length and three feet in width, right toward the other property, so, yes, that would be. About seven feet from the edge of the concrete.
Okay, I mean, it seems pretty straightforward to me, does anyone uh, from uh, the zoning board have any further questions or concerns?
No, I I mean, um, I think I'm generally in in favor, I don't have any other questions, I agree, it's straightforward.
Right, so I make a motion that we approve the variance.
Perfect, Charlie, second?
I'll second it.
Second it, okay, all 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 those uh, in in favor? Uh, Charlie, Charlie, Ken?
Yes.
Rosemary?
Yes.
And myself, I approve, so you have your uh, your variance for the setback.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Peter. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
So um, so now do we, do we have to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Well, we probably should.
Okay.
Or we can just turn off our.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We make a mo- all right, we are adjourning.
Okay.
Um, and then, and then Peter will get a letter out to you.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Keep well.
All right, good night, everyone.
Have a good night.
Bye bye.